Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome. I'm going to call the order. The regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. It is September 15th, and it is now 10:00 a.m. So with that, I want to take, before we jump into this, a salute to the flag. I would like to take a minute. We've had, over the weekend, we lost a near and dear colleague, Mayor Bob Kroll from Carson City. He's served with many of us on many different boards, and I had distinct pleasure of serving with him at NACO for the last six years, along with Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hartung, and Commissioner Burkett. All of us have spent time with Mr. Kroll. He was a strong individual, served his country not only in the armed services, but also as a public servant for many, many years for the city of Carson. Mayor Bob was just the epitome of a well-rounded individual who really cared for his community. So if we can, I'd like to take a minute for a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. And with that, Manager Brown, will you please lead us in the salute, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I mean, 2020 has been a very difficult year for a lot of us. We've lost a lot of great people, and actually sadly, yesterday, we lost one of our Judge Steinheimer's clerks, who was a good friend of mine, Marcy. Her mom passed on, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma yesterday. So cancer's been having its, having its been away with my friends and family in the last couple of, this year, so it's not a, not a great thing. But our, my heart goes out to Nancy, I'll miss her very much, she was a wonderful woman. Anyways, with that, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burkett-Gler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung, via telephone. Von Hartung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney Dave Watts-Vial, via Zoom.
Nathan Edwards, this morning. Here.
Thank you, Nate. I'm County Clerk Nancy Parent. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Mr. Manager, we're on to item three this morning.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments signed in this morning?
We have quite a bit of public comment, Mr. Chair, in the form of emails and a couple of voicemails.
Okay, can we, it looks like we have Mr. Kenji Otto here in the public with us, so let's allow Mr. Otto to go first. Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Good morning. My sticker wouldn't stick on. I just have general comments Saturday evening in Douglas County about what's historical. Basically, I figured three to 5,000, but I've heard figures up to 15,000 to maybe 20,000. Voters attended President Trump's peaceful protest at Mendon Airport, Nevada. I'd like to note, the current known population of the county seat, the unincorporated town of Mendon, is approximately 3,239. After long-term preparation at the Reno-Tahoe Airport was squashed on September 9, 2020, the Republican team hurriedly scrambled to put together one of the best reorganized huge political events in Nevada history on September 12, 2020, a Herculean task. Vehicles lined US 395 for approximately 10 miles outside of Mendon, shuttle buses were supplied before and after the event. Many chose to walk three to five miles to their vehicles after the event. I have to say, I have had similar experiences with stern faces of federal law enforcement. I have never seen what appeared to be camaraderie amongst Secret Service, federal sheriff, Nevada State Police, and Douglas County deputies. I saw fine-tuned, functioning-friendly traffic and security law enforcement efforts with no injuries or arrests, as far as I know, a big hand to law enforcement. The end result was a terrific, well-managed, enjoyable, peaceful protest by Republicans from hundreds of miles, with President Trump speaking to the enthusiastic large crowd. It was shameful that Washoe County and the once respectable city of Reno was outclassed by Douglas County and the unincorporated town of Mendon in the eyes of the nation. At the B O C C meeting on August 18, 2020, I was called out by name after my public comments by a commissioner that was childish, unprofessional, and undignified for a politician. Mr. Hartung, as a Republican, I vote voter, I find you repugnant. I'm encouraging all Washoe County voters in District 4 to vote for Marie Baker, Democrat, to be, need to be, you need to be replaced. I'd like to thank Marcia for all of her cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Madam Clerk, can we go to the emails next, please?
Certainly. Our first email is from Adam Hirsch. Dear Commissioners, my name is Adam Hirsch, and I'm the owner of 1,021 Saturn Court in the Apollo neighborhood of Incline Village. This is a year-round S T R on, there is a year-round S T R on the same street, which is listed in the property record as 3,100 square foot, three-bed house. The owner bills it as a five-bedroom accommodating 14 people, no sprinkler system, illegal bedroom, driveway too steep, limited egress. Recent issues: Airbnb guests lighting firecrackers in the street, Airbnb guests illegally shooting BB guns at targets, birds, and other animals, recently had five cars and a bus in driveway. Past issues: A house fire started by guests, animals in trash which we clean up, trash tossed all over, party with strippers and a drug overdose, ambulance and fire called, lighted cigarettes tossed in bushes, much late-night noise, a regular and continual problem, lots of strangers in previously residential neighborhood, serious safety concerns, cars parked illegally on the street in winter, elderly neighbor was charged by S T R guests' dogs. Please enact serious regulation. Thanks, Adam Hirsch. Next, we have an email from Joe Schaefer. Dear Washoe County Commissioners, Lucy Burkett-Gler, Brown, Herman Emerson, Mullin, Hartung, and Jung, you are killing us, literally. In order to ensure maximum revenue from short-term rentals, at least one of you has succumbed to two false narratives. The first false narrative is that those protesting the depredations of short-term renters in residential neighborhoods, S T Rs, are just a few whiny rich folks up the hill. This falsehood disparages the thousands of hard-working service workers in home healthcare, hotel, and home housekeeping, teaching, landscaping, and running small businesses, all of whom pay either primarily or secondarily into Washoe County and state of Nevada coffers. It disparages those of us still working or who have started second careers. Just because Zephyr Cove and Incline Village, Crystal Bay residents do not come to your meetings en masse in the time of COVID-19 does not mean that the thousands of us Washoe County residents in the western suburbs are not deeply harmed by your intransigence in this matter. The second false narrative is that there are bigger fish to fry. If a few old people die from COVID as a result of the assault from weekend or one-week renters, well, the western suburbs are, suburbs are, after all, lightly populated. Not all short-term renters are bad people, but the trash they spew in every location is bad. Without intelligent regulation, 14 to 20 people in six or eight cars can stay in a family home designed for four to six. Of course, the garbage overflows, and of course, the bears and other wildlife that help make Lake Tahoe, Washoe County's biggest tourism draw, will be slaughtered as dangerous. The danger comes from failure to act. Now, their vehicles are not inherently evil, but parking so many cars in so small a space, overflowing into the middle of both sides of many residential avenues, means paramedics, police, and fire personnel are unable to traverse many streets. In a life-and-death situation to the few outweighed by the greater, is a life-and-death situation to the few outweighed by the greater distribution to the many? I have yet to see any of these invaders so relieved to be beyond their own state's restrictions, wear a mask as they walk on our trails. The redeeming fact is that they are outdoors, but so were the people on the beaches in Miami. Every trail around is packed with people inches apart, passing each in both directions. No one from the Nevada side of State Line in the south to Crystal Bay in the north is asking for a ban on S T Rs. We Washoe County residents merely ask that intelligent regulation be instituted for the protection of Washoe County residents, Washoe County property, and the beautiful lake that defines Washoe County's western border. Not being willing to consider a dialogue about how S T Rs should be regulated is a breach, and I will put the rest of Mr. Schaefer's email in the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go next to Ms. Heather Williams' email.
Okay. 14 September 2020. Please read this aloud, include in the public record for the Washoe County Commissioners meeting 9/15/20. The new S T R policy adopted by the Washoe County Commission is not even a good start. While it may reflect the views and interests of the Commissioners, it certainly has no bearing on the issues of Incline Residence. I have sent emails and pleas to the Commissioners. Only Ms. Burkett-Gler has had the courtesy to respond once. I have attended public forums where the meeting was open with "there will be no ban on short-term rentals," and then we were given a limited number of issues we could discuss, as well as issues we were not allowed to raise. That sounds more like county input than public input. Let me give you my personal and public input. All three of these incidents occurred just this weekend and are not atypical. One, outside my home, I picked up 12, yes, 12 piles of dog poop and dog poop bags. Two, on Sunday morning, the S T R down the street had three bags of garbage sitting outside the bear box. Three, beginning Friday afternoon, another rental in the neighborhood had eight cars parked on the street with two more in the driveway for one rental. In an emergency, a fire truck could not have gotten through.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
You did not start your clock.
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. I will take it down. I think we're probably at about a minute, Mr. Chair. There you go.
Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Nate. So I've had this happen a couple of times, and it's not, you know, a big deal, but I think what should happen is you should just set the timer for the three minutes. I have done open-meeting law complaints where people counted out the seconds after a situation like this and argued that they didn't get their full three. So unless we know that we're at a minute left, I would just set it for three and just do it that way.
Thank you. But at this time, we do, we are going to submit her email to the record. It was submitted via email to us. The clerk has read, in my opinion, about two minutes into this. I'm going to let her continue for the remainder minute to finish the statement, and then the email will be submitted to the record. So, thank you. Assistant District Attorney, Madam Clerk, if you'll continue, please.
Thank you.
Finish the last minute, please.
Without being dramatic, we are under siege in Incline. It used to be just the summer that we could handle. Now it is year-round and only getting worse year by year. I now live on Hotel Row, not a neighborhood. We used to go for walks without fear of being mowed down. We knew our neighbors. Now it is all professional investors and property management services. Dog poop, garbage, speeding, boats, cars on my street, in front of my house, everywhere. Does this sound like somewhere you want to live? There is no respect for the residents, the wildlife, or the lake, and that is my biggest concern. By not limiting and placing restrictions on S T Rs, we are going to lose this beautiful lake, and Washoe County is going to kill its golden goose. We have already lost our community and our quality of life. At the very least, the following restrictions should be applied. One, no off-street parking. Our streets are too narrow, and emergency vehicles and snowplows cannot get through. Two, bear boxes should be mandatory with instructions on how to use them. Three, require Incline Village residency. And for the record, the balance of Ms. Williams' email will be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next, we are on to an email from Adam Auerbach. Dear County Commissioners, as you know, the neighborhood is up in arms over the RCF appeal of your unanimous decision to deny them rezoning by the church properties from LDS to MDS. I'm not going to reiterate the points that many of my neighbors and myself have already addressed. The planned development is a bad fit for our neighborhood despite their argument. There is no need for a zone change, as there is sufficient land elsewhere for medium-density use. There is no change in circumstances, nor was there a mistake made when the neighborhood was originally zoned. The fact that RCF wants to develop these properties is not good enough to justify a zone change. I recommend to preserve and protect the inherent aesthetic quality of our neighborhood and maintain the LDS zoning as originally intended. Thank you, Adam Auerbach. And next, we have an email from Joe Farrell. Commissioners, please read aloud during public input and include this email in the public record. My wife and I retired to Incline Village two years ago and have been homeowners for 18 years. Over the past six years, we have been subjected to increasing problems caused by the S T Rs on streets near our home. We've called the sheriff numerous times. This summer, a neighbor had to call the sheriff and the fire department to put out a fire on a deck that started due to charcoal fire and short-term renters not knowing the dangers of fire in the mountains. We've had several trash events where S T R renters left open garbage doors, garage doors. They have, we have bears roaming through our neighborhood, most recently a mother and cub made the newspapers because the cub ran to an upstairs room and tried to go out a window on the second floor. These are scary events, but they're not the worst of our S T R experience. The S T R owners advertise sleeping capacity for 12. They have a backyard hot tub. They charge $1,550 per night. When people pay that much money to stay at a place, they don't care about the neighbors, they're there to party. More recently, the property was rented 10 days straight over the Fourth of July holiday, and they invited others to join them during the day. Cars were parked everywhere. Too often, we experienced non-stop parties lasting all day and into the night. We listened to drunken yelling and blasting rap music. We smelled dope from the hot tub, which is less than 150 feet from our master bedroom. If it was one, a one-time thing, our neighbors getting married or some other big event, we'd grin and bear it. These aren't our neighbors, they aren't our friends, they are drunk, obnoxious, aggressive, and sometimes violent strangers. One night, I was awakened at 1:00 a.m. by honking horns and drunks yelling and screaming. They don't care about us or any residents in the neighborhood. One renter said, "When I go on vacation, I party as hard as I can and never go back to the same place again." He was the worst one so far. Until you've experienced such an out-of-control S T R, you cannot appreciate the aggravation and angst it causes. Will it take a wildfire to occur due to S T R negligence or something, or someone being mauled by a bear in order for you, as Commissioners, to act on stringent S T R regulations or banning S T R? How can you allow this unsupervised hotel in my residential neighborhood? Where are my property rights? Joe Farrell, resident of Incline Village. Next, Mr. Chair, we have an email from Jean Ryan. Dear Commissioners, as a longtime Incline resident and HOA president, I'd like to give you an example of the S T R problems we have, which are similar to those throughout our village. Take the problem of trash from an S T R renter at your, at our HOA. Our ordinance says all owners have to have bear boxes, while our HOA has dumpsters for trash and for recyclables, as well as bear boxes, first completed to have them. Some S T R renters even leave garbage outside a bear box because they do not care to take the time to separate garbage from recycle, and therefore can't fit three large pizza boxes in one bin box, along with either bottles and cans that all should have gone to recycle. But when an S T R renter doesn't follow the instructions, leaves garbage outside a bear box, and or puts the garbage in recycling bin, it's a problem. It may sound like a small problem. In Incline Village, we have a waste management recycling program, and we have a trash garbage service. When the garbage goes into recycling bin and gets mixed in, W M has to separate it out. This takes time and costs money. The cost is passed on to waste management clients. They raise our fees. The increased fee is used to deal with a problem that should not occur. Now, this is just one ignorant S T R renter, but multiply that by a thousand of S T Rs in Incline Village, where S T R renters don't know trash rules and don't care to follow them. And what about the emotional strain of having to deal with an inconsiderate S T R renter who doesn't care about the environment or our wildlife, and thinks it's cool to leave donuts on the parking area retaining wall where, so they could get to see a bear? What was a trash problem becomes a management problem and a safety problem. You see, each problem caused by S T R renters isn't just a small problem. Small problems have big repercussions to residents, managers, service personnel, deputies, bear league members, on and on. Your trash ordinance requiring a bear box and posted instructions won't solve the problem. The problem, the problem is obvious, S T R renter who has no responsibility to the community. Until you supervise S T R renters during occupancy, just like hotel managers, our little problems will continue to become big problems. From 18 years of experience, please make your responses to the S T R ordinances showing responsibility to us. We are your village, your community, your neighbors, your full-time sustaining purchasers, and your friends. Please hear us sincerely, Jean Ryan, HOA owner. And I now have an email from Dick MayoCo, or Nick MayoCo. It's time for the Commissioners to act now to get the S T R ordinance back on the agenda. It's been a long time for this community to have our lives disrupted this way. I've lived here for 30 years, and now we are living between two S T Rs, and it's time for this board to act to severely limit S T Rs in our community. The Washoe County Commissioners could have put in policies many years ago, but chose not to, making S T Rs as residential property by adopting the IRC Residential Code. At that time, they could have included the IBC, which defines use and occupancy classification Chapter 3. The Washoe County planners and building department gave recommendations to this board, and the recommendations were ignored and pushed for policies that left planners with a tough job to write and enforce. In the meeting minutes, Commissioner Lucy emphasized he did not want to see any kind of ban on rental properties in the county. He pointed out Lake Tahoe was a good draw for people to visit the community, and homeowners should not be excluded from sharing their homes. He indicated short-term rentals improved air quality and sacrificing short-term rentals could have a negative impact on tourism, resulting in financial suffering. He pointed out that there was only one hotel in the area, and without short-term rentals, people would not have a place to stay. He summarized this discussion should be about the board drafting good policy, which laid out how the county would interact with owners and renters. We have not seen any studies supporting any of these statements. Our community is not a business that should be supporting the main tax revenue for RSCVA, and Commissioner Lucy also sits on the RSCVA board, which is a conflict of interest. Our neighbors are not a commercial area for S T R to be run. We are part of a community that deserves to be protected and heard. We raise our families here, and this is our home. We live in a tourist area, not a tourist town. We have residents that are year-round. The question would be, when does the S T R become commercial? Some homeowners rent out their houses to cover costs for owning their vacation home. As soon as there is positive cash flow, then it should be considered under the IBC 310 as residential group R. When individuals or entities buy more than two or more properties, then it should be considered a business. What would keep a company from buying up real estate and renting those properties out, turning them into real estate investment trust? This is already happening across our neighborhood and all other resort areas throughout the world. Ways to control this practice is to issue only one permit to an individual or group, restrict multiple permits if you own more than one house, have the S T R occupied by the homeowner for the portion of a year, require a five-day or longer minimum stays. Incline Village and Crystal Bay permanent residents should be benefiting from permitted S T Rs. The balance of Mr. MayoCo's email will be placed in the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then can we finalize Danielle Purdy's email?
Sure.
And then we'll move on to the voicemails.
Okay. Danielle Purdy, brother of Thomas Purdy murdered at Washoe County Jail. I was in your community last week feeding the homeless and registering people to vote. I offered all the members to come out and participate in feeding the homeless and their community. None of you showed up, showed, not that I expected that you would, and this is my second time in Reno. The first was there to take my brother off life support. This time, it was to protect, protest the police brutality that goes on there. We had a rally out in front of the courthouse, only to have officers across the street in a parking garage on the third level laughing at us. That just shows what they think of their community members, as far as I'm concerned. You've given them a license to murder. I was down, out in front of the jail with my 12-year-old son, only to be surrounded by six deputies trying to get me to move to a so-called free speech zone, which there is no such thing for, it's called public property. Also, to have a deputy place his hand on his gun with my 12-year-old son. Now I find the actions of that particular deputy to be cowardly, and he should be ashamed of himself, as you should be ashamed of yourselves for not standing up for your community members. And that concludes our email, public comment this morning.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two voicemails, so we will go to Ms. Anne Marie Grant, the voicemail first.
9/15/20, how is the community in Nevada? Free everything. Senator Thomas Purdy has had a real, weekly, pro-40 news, and he's been seeing that at Washoe County Jail. Still, Tom, I wanted to let you know that I was up at the jail peacefully, holding a sign for my brother with my 12-year-old nephew, and my brother Dan, and my son, and we were surrounded by six deputies trying to intimidate us to move to the so-called First Amendment area. I'd just like you to know and also recognize, and maybe let your deputies know, that my First Amendment rights and everyone else's doesn't end anywhere on public property, and that the intimidation tactics were not appreciated. And I also want to let you know that I don't believe anything has changed up at the jail because I had a deputy in charge state to me, he didn't know who Thomas Purdy was, but he was sorry for my loss. Well, everybody should know who Thomas Purdy, as well as Nico Smith and Justin Thompson, who work at that jail, are. Everybody who works there should know who those three individuals are. And if they don't, that means that they're not talking about their own George Floyds and their own shortcomings. They should be trained on, this is how, what we don't do, because this is how we kill I would also like to say that when we had our event, which was organized by local impacted families, we had Reno police standing across the street in the garage, laughing as families told their stories and spoke about their loved ones. I can't say that I'm surprised, especially when elected officials like yourselves aren't holding them accountable. You just simply ignore. That's what you do. You choose to turn a blind eye, and that's not acceptable. Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, next, if we could do the voicemail from Kelly MayoCo.
Good morning. I'm Kelly MayoCo. I'm leaving a message for Tuesday, September 15th, Commissioner meeting. Dear Commissioners, I'd like to tell you why I want you to limit short-term rentals in my neighborhood. The most important reason is because I don't really like living in fear, and that's what I feel like I'm doing. The parcels next to us were converted to full-time S T Rs, and we've been afraid, afraid to interact with the hordes of strangers who come to party there, people that are intoxicated or high on weed, they're not reasonable, and they're not responsible. They aren't neighborly either. We never know what problems will be caused next. In the past six months, the residents have called the police multiple times, called the fire department to put out a deck fire, we've called the bear league to rescue a cub hanging from an upstairs window, and we've called the property managers, but never really get a response from them. We live in fear, because we never know what the next group of renters will do. This is no way to live, and nobody should live like this. We never thought we'd be living a nightmare like this with no end in sight, really. We bought our house for retirement. We bought our house for retirement, and when we first moved up here thirty years ago, we bought because we wanted to live in a community, in a village where we know our neighbors. But now we don't know our neighbors. We've never met them. Some are in Texas or others elsewhere. They don't even stay at the residence. They don't know us, and they don't care about us. Residential short-term rentals should only be allowed if they're really somebody's residence. In residential neighborhoods, no absentee owners should be allowed to operate STRs. Please limit STRs to property owners to live in the house at least six months or full-time. We want to know our neighbors. We want to enjoy our lives again. We don't want to live the rest of our lives like this in fear. Please help us. Thank you so much."
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our public comment for this morning. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to item four.
Item four is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do you have anything first this morning?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of items. First, I'd like to remind the public that Washoe County has initiated its Small Business Assistance Program for those small businesses in the unincorporated areas of the county that are struggling because of the COVID-19 crisis. You can go to our website for more information or to the NACO website at naco.org for more information. Secondly, I'd like to point out, have some information from the registrar voters just to clarify some confusion that has come up in the last few days with regards to mail-in voting. Reminding everybody that all registered voters will receive a ballot in the mail. Party affiliations are not evident anywhere on the ballot envelope. Voters should check their registration status if they've moved or may not have updated their mailing address with the elections office. All signatures on mail and in-person ballots are verified. If there is a discrepancy, the voter is notified to clear it up. If the ballot is fraudulent, it is not counted. Ballot fraud is a crime. Anyone attempting to vote with a fraudulent ballot will be prosecuted. Attempting to vote by mail and in person is also fraud and a crime. There are checks in place to ensure that this doesn't occur. The county is using a ballot tracking system called Ballot Trax with an X. Voters can track their ballots just like they would a FedEx package. They can receive updates via text, voice, or email. And in-person voters are encouraged to bring their mail ballot with them, but they can also still vote if they do not bring it. They will have to sign an affirmation that they will not vote by mail as well. So I just wanted to provide those updates. You can go to the Registrar Voters website for more information. But there have been a lot of inquiries coming in about that since the weekend, and I thought I'd share. And then last, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the Chair and the Health Officer and our friends in Reno and Sparks with regards to reopening our local bars and taprooms. I think we're pretty close to being able to do that. I can tell you that Commissioner Lucy, Chair Lucy, worked tirelessly with our folks at the Task Force to make sure that we were in a position to do that, as well as the Health Officer, and hopefully by close of business, but by end of day tomorrow, we'll be in a position to do that. Chair Lucy may have more information in his update. Also notably, our results have gotten much better in the last week. So thanks to everybody involved in making that happen. Those are my updates this morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And I think you are being very much too humble in the sense that you are just as much as involved in the process of getting our bars and taverns reopened and redrafting that, I think, without Manager Brown's assistance. Let me just tell you, on Thursday, when we had, after our presentation, was a... There was a lot of high fives in Manager Brown's office to try to make sure that we unexpectedly got what we got. So with that, thank you, sir. So with that, I'm going to go to Commissioner Herman. I have you signed in first, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a long ways from my speaker here. The first thing I wanted to say was, like Mr. Otto, I feel that Washoe County has tarnished its image and has probably offended a great sitting president. And I just wondered about what degree of disrespect have we come to. So I just wonder how we're going to recover from that. Okay, so... I'm back to my list here, and it's kind of long. I apologize. But I missed a meeting, so I got to catch up. So there's, Mr. Colisi was told last spring that his road was going to be slurried because the road's in terrible condition. Gets a lot of traffic. And he was told that it would be finished in July, but it's long past that. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of who is responsible for that. And I have had so many citizens contact me and say, "We cannot get anybody from planning or any of the departments to call us back. We aren't getting phone calls back." One gentleman had a permit for a fence, and it was over a year, and he hadn't been able to get ahold of anybody. And this was started back before this serious thing we've been going through. There's the, next item is a lady named Mrs. Blaylock. She's from Grandview Terrace. She went through the fire last year, and they just barely were able to drive out of the, when they told them they had to leave. She said that it was very crowded at the only entrance and exit into the Grandview Terrace. And she suggested that we have an emergency exit on the other road that would go through, but it's been blocked. So I'm not sure whether that would be the fire chief or who we would contact about that because there were some people that barely made it out of there. I hear that the shooting item will be on the agenda on the twenty-fifth. That's next Tuesday. We still have a lot of speeding going on in Lemon Valley. And the folks that offered to pay for the traffic calming or speed bumps, they haven't had any answer yet, so I'm just hoping that that can start happening. And people from Bird Eye, I get another one here from people on Hill Lane are having a lot of trouble. It's a very narrow road, and they're having just huge amounts of very fast traffic. So maybe that could have little signs or something like that to get them slowed down. The last thing I have here, and I'm sorry I took so long. But this party is an active military person who is not in Reno right now. She's on active duty, assigned in Washington, DC. And she has an approved absentee voter request. And as you can see, she voted absentee ballot in the 2020 primary. And she would like to make sure, because she hasn't got it yet, that I'm going to give this to the county manager to hand over to registrar. And just so that she is answered and she knows what we need to do. So sorry about the length of that, but that's what happens when you miss a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. We appreciate it. Next, I have Madam Vice Chair Burke Bigler signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. First, I wanted to let everybody know who has not seen the RGGA report yet yesterday. Ed, City Councilman Ed Lawson was sworn in as Mayor of Sparks, and he will be our new mayor in Sparks. And replacing him in his ward two seat will be Ms. Diane VanderWaal. So I think that's going to be, those are both great additions for us, and we've enjoyed working with Ed for some years. And I think Diane will do an excellent job as his new city councilperson. Additionally, I want to also take the opportunity to thank both Chair Lucy and Manager Brown for all the efforts you put into getting our bars reopened. Oh, my goodness. I've had nothing but people calling me and texting me and emailing me telling me how grateful they are to the county for finally getting the governor to see the importance of this for our business growth, our employees of these various different establishments. And interestingly enough, from Apartment, the Apartment Association, so excited because this means that a lot of their residents will be put back to work and will then be able to pay their rent every month. And so everybody's very excited about that. Thank you very much for all the hard work the two of you put in in getting this done. And I know that, Mr. Manager, you have heard a great deal from our friend in Incline Village who owns the bowling alley. He was doing the happy dance all up and down the street in Incline Village. So thank you for that also. And then last, I would just say, there's really no need for me to add anything to the conversation about STRs and vacation rentals. I think we heard enough from constituents in Incline Village about their concerns. I do think that perhaps this is the time for us to look at the legal aspect and the, how we would go about bifurcating the valley portion from the lake portion. Because the valley portion, I know, does not have the issue. I think ninety percent of these are in the lake area, and really, none of us would want to have to live in a situation that some of these people are living in. We know a lot of it has to do with COVID and that people are coming over to the mountains. We understand that, but it doesn't change the problems that are associated with the entire situation that's going on there. So I will just not say anymore and say thank you, Commissioners, for really seriously looking at this problem on behalf of my constituents in Incline Village. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Hartan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start the same way that you started. I want to send my condolences to the Kroll family. Very, very dear friend. Worked with Bob, Mayor Kroll, for many years. He was great on NACO. You know, he was one of the founding partners of Camford Kroll. What a great loss to everyone, and my condolences to their family and to the people of Carson and, of course, everyone in the region. I mean, it's a big loss for us. Saturday, we held the Nevada Veterans Memorial along with Sparks, held a memorial for Mayor Ron Smith. As you know, I serve on the Nevada Veterans Memorial Board. And we did shifts. I actually did sort of a double shift. I was there from noon until, actually around five, when we broke down. It was a wonderful turnout. We saw many people. We never had terribly many people, more than, say, eighteen or twenty there at a time, but it was just this constant throng all day long of people coming to pay their respects for Mayor Smith. Dear friend to all of us, he was really just an amazing fellow in our community. I believe you're going to, well, not believe. I'll have some news for you in the not-too-distant future. That memorial will get finished this next year. So we have someone who is stepping forward with some great assistance, and I'll delve more into that. I also stole a little bit of my thunder, Vice Chair Burke Bigler, on Mayor Lawson. Congratulations to Mr. Lawson, and congratulations to Diane VanderWaal. They'll both do a great job. As all of you have known both of them for many, many years. I actually served with Diane when I was on the Planning Commission. She was on the Washoe County Planning Commission at the time. So I have great respect for her. She's very, very good. She's well-read. She's going to do a great job at the Spark City Council. I'm going to jump out into Spanish Springs, and then, Mr. Chair, I'm going to steal a little bit of thunder from RTC. I hope you don't mind.
No, sir. Go ahead.
Got another email from a community member from Rosetta Stone about speed bumps on Rosetta Stone, which is right by Alice Taylor. And we had some temporaries on Silent Sparrow. We were able to get some speed bumps on Silent Sparrow and Talking Sparrow. And I'm hopeful that staff, it's been funneled through 311, but I just, I want to make sure that we are ahead of this. I don't want to have to be reactive. I'd rather be proactive in these kinds of situations. And so I look forward to hearing from staff and where we are on the traffic study and if we have one done. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, something that you and I, and actually Mayor Smith and others, had worked on for a great deal of time. We got a $23 million grant from the DOT to widen Pyramid Highway from essentially Queen, where it sort of necks down, but it's a little north of that, all the way to Los Altos. And it's something that we've been working on with our partners in Washington, DC, our federal delegation. Our staff here at RTC has done a great job. I just, I want to thank everyone who worked on that. That's a much-needed improvement to the Pyramid Highway. I was, and rightfully, I believe, vocally critic of the way that the Pyramid and McCarron intersection was done. Not the intersection itself. I served on the original steering committee when I was on the Citizens Advisory Board. I think the design of the intersection was great. What they failed to do was take that third lane all the way to the top of the hill out to Disk Drive. And that was talked about initially, and then it was polled at some point. I don't know when. And that was a disappointment for me because the bottleneck really is because of Disk Drive. So this is going to solve a lot of those problems. It's going to be a great addition to the beginning of widening Pyramid Highway. And I say to Los Altos, it actually goes to Golden View. There'll be a bunch of improvements that go all the way to Golden View in preparation to get it to Sparks Boulevard and have a full-fledged interchange at Sparks Boulevard. So that's kind of on the map. And then, of course, I'm hopeful that we continue to look at the issues out north of... It's essentially Eagle Canyon, but it's essentially, in fact, for all intents and purposes, it's Egyptian and Sunset Springs, where the road necks down to two lanes. It's a very, very dangerous stretch of road. We were able to get a light in there, but we really do need Washoe County to be more proactive in that area. And I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartan. I do appreciate those comments. I'll kind of just dovetail right quickly off of what you said with RTC. I think Commissioner Hartan spends a lot of time working on Sparks issues and I think North Valley's issues. As it pertains to RTC, during his tenure, I know he has traveled with me to Washington, DC and sat in many of those DOT meetings advocating for those grants, those build grants, which are not easy to come by. RTC, we're very fortunate due to the good leadership and the strong work that we do at Washoe RTC and the willingness of our citizens to pay and fund that fuel tax. It allows us to build a lot of these amazing projects where many cities can't do that. But it does take a lot of advocating for those funds. And so I think that's a huge victory on your behalf to do those types of projects. I want to jump to what, some issues that the Vice Chair brought up to. STRs, short-term rentals. There is quite a bit of misinformation out there in regards to statements that we pulled the... pulled the, we pulled the item so that I, I could lead the reconstruction or efforts to do that. That is not the case whatsoever. The Vice Chair is very much still driving a lot of those discussions with staff, and we are still working on that together as a, as a commission, not individually, not as a board, but as a board and working with staff to address the concerns of every policy which we draft here at the, at the county level. That's, so that it is effective for every part of our county. The Zalesi Lane issue will be coming back, but it's being addressed. Many of those concerns are being addressed once again with staff and also with the developers, but we will, we will, we'll see that again. Our Place. Yesterday, the Vice Chair and I both participate in the Community Homeless Advisory Board, which is constructed of all three municipalities with two electeds from each municipality sitting on that board. And as many of you know, we have opened Our Place at the state campus under the help of this board, and Washtau County solely paying for that remodel and reconstruction of many of those buildings to advocate and help create programming for the most vulnerable populations of our community, which would be females, families, and children. Those individuals that are experiencing homelessness and have, and many issues that come along with homelessness. There has been some discussion saying that, however, that at Our Place, we are turning individuals away, turning females away and forcing individuals to go to other locations, and that's just not the case. There's many issues that have been addressed with our community, with RISE for those populations, and we are working to do, deal with a number of those things. But it's really, what I want to make sure is that, as of right now, we aren't full at Our Place. We currently had, as of Sunday, we had 80 women last, on, on Sunday, and we have 108 beds available at our community, at our, and this is just very much, Our Place is very much like Crossroads for us. And it is a program which this board has advocated since I sat, since I got elected, and six years ago. We have advocated for a different, separated housing arrangement for individuals, but with programming, very much like our Crossroads program has. And so when we finally delivered that, I, I need the community to understand, we tried to do emergent sheltering of, of these populations, and it's important for us to continue to do emergent sheltering, but the main priority and the main goal of Our Place has always been to create programming and help individuals that are in need. So I want to make sure that that was very clear because there has been some misinformation out there amongst the community. And so I'm happy to answer any other questions. I know our Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas and our Director Human Services Amber Howell, and their teams have been working on this diligently. COVID stats. The one thing I did want to bring up that the manager, we have been, as a community, I want to thank the community. We've continued to work very well towards, you know, lowering our numbers and seeing our numbers go down. As of yesterday, last week when we met, I was frustrated because we hadn't met three of our criteria. We were in non-compliance of all three criteria as of this morning. We are at, in compliance with, out of compliance with just two criteria, and very close with the actual, one of those criteria, which is, we are right at 7% and trying to get under it as soon as, so as soon as we move under the 7%, we will be in compliance with, just, out of compliance with just one of the criteria. So as a, as a community, our numbers are going in the right direction. It's, it's been challenging, but we are moving in the right direction. So I want to thank everybody for masking up, continuing to serve, to continue to make sure that we stay open as a community. I think you guys have done a wonderful job, but we are far from, and hopefully with the reopening of our bars and taverns, people will remain safe and stay safe. And I think this is the most, that's an important thing is to get our individuals, some of our, a lot of our individuals back to work. So with those stats, I, I look forward to seeing the next couple of weeks how we continue to grow and, and progress. And then lastly, there was some discussion about the President's visit to Washtau. I want to make it very clear that Washtau County played no role in the President's visit to northern Nevada. The discussion for the President to visit held solely with the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority and, and their decision not to allow that on their private property, on their property, which is publicly-held property. So that was solely there. We never had the discussion. We were never contacted by the President's campaign or whatnot. So those decisions were made outside of this community and this body, but we've worked, we would always work with any sitting president. We respect the office, no matter who sits in that office, and do that any different time. So please let that be very clear, that we would work with every sitting president. So those are my comments for this morning. I want to thank everybody for letting me be a little bit long-winded, but I had some notes that I wanted to get off and out. So, Madam Vice Chair, I have you signed back in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You kicked off a thought in my mind on, on It's Our Place. Also, I think it's also important for the public to understand that winter's coming, and we are worried about winter and those people who still don't have locations. And so our team, our staff, Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas and, and Director Amber Howell are both working very diligently on trying to see if the other two buildings that we have leased there can be overflow or whatever we're going to need. And so in the event, in the event winter gets here sooner than being homeless and do not have a place to, to stay, I, I am very excited about the, It's Our Place. It's beautiful. It's, they've done a great job, and, and I think everybody's working very together, very strongly to kind of get this thing together. So I want to make sure that the public understands that, yes, we're, we are as a county and as the cities are on top of making sure we can do what we can to clean up our river, get the homeless off the river, and get them protected, especially with the winter coming close. Tomorrow is going to be a really ugly day from what the National Weather Service is telling us. As far as smoke is concerned, so ugly that there'll be lots of warnings keeping people in. And so that, of course, is an issue of concern with the homeless also, and something that we will continue to work on. But I just, thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing up the C-HAB meeting. I had forgotten that I wanted to also talk about the extra buildings there, so thank you very much. I think things are moving forward on that.
They are. Commissioner Jung, I also have you signed in, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have an idea that I'd like legal and staff to think about. When it comes to these short-term renters and getting appropriate policy, one of the biggest issues has been that all policy we do is county-wide and can't do spot zoning. But I'm wondering, could we use the fact that Incline Village has a GID and figure out a legal way? Now tell me how it's not going to work. Please tell me how this could work. If it's not going to work, I need three options. Could there be a way that they could, because what I understand with this two GID ballot initiatives out in Commissioner Herman's district has a lot to do with that self-governance. So can I get a, an analysis or a summary? Is that possible? If it's not possible, what are three things we could do to make that possible sooner rather than later? Because this commissioner is very concerned about having nothing in place, particularly during a pandemic. Then therefore, since we don't really have this, this in our policy and our ordinance, we have nothing to enforce. And I agree that the Lake Basin is a whole different issue than any other place in all of Nevada, and it cannot be compared to Mount Charleston because of the interstate transfer agreement and really ignorance in terms of tourists and travelers until they figured out exactly who didn't enforce mask rules in Nevada and who did, California. So I think we, there's got to be other ways we can look at this, but I've been telling staff, I want it sooner rather than later because I think that having a policy that may not make everybody happy, which there is no such thing, already embraced, get it codified and legal, then we would have a lot more strings we could pull. But most importantly, if it's a total disaster on one side or the other, there's nothing in the law that says we can't change our mind and change the law. We could change it every day, really, if we wanted to. Of course, it's a 30-day notice, blah, blah, blah. But I really want to get more towards problem-solving than, oh, yes, 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 and oh, no, 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 and more of, no, this is an issue of county proportion, and how can we gain more control to ensure that private property owner rights are protected and to ensure that, you know, that there are protections in place for those people who choose to rent out, give their place, whatever. Because, you know, if you start making it, it has, if you're making money off it, people will barter. That's what Burning Man is. It's a whole bartering society. So, you know, it's, it's, and then, and then finally, final thought, and then I'm done, is, you know, the reason why we have to make regulations and laws is because there's always knuckleheads who aren't going to do the right thing. Unfortunately, we know, I've known since I was a teenager, which is over 30 years ago, that Tonwa was a place to rent a cabin and paray. I mean, that's nothing new. I think what's new is the fact that we are feeling an overabundance of visitors due to the pandemic. And this issue has been going on before that, too, but it's not new that that's a party lake where people go and rent and act like animals. I, I, that's not a new issue, at least not for 30 years for me. And I lived in South Shore, too, by the way. So I just think that we've, we've got to come to a balance of that, and I'd rather do it sooner than later so we have something on the books or get, if, give them the, the ability to self-govern or change the law. I'm not sure what it is, and I'm not a lawyer, but I do need some solution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Appreciate it. All right, seeing none. I think the manager's giving me a nod. He's got all the notes down there. He's ready to rock and roll. All right. So we will move, we will close that item, item four, and we'll move on to our donations. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to read our donations this morning into the, into the record?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. The items five, so we have item 5A1, which is a recommendation to acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimated market value of $5,422.75, and accept donations to the Human Services Agency Senior Services Fund to support operations of the Washtau County Senior Centers in the amount of $25. Both are retroactive to the paid period, the, to period of July 1, 2020 through July 31, 2020. Again, always thankful for Human Services donations and for help to our senior citizens. 5A2 is a recommendation to acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimated market value of $1,800 retroactive for the period of July 1, 2020 through July 31, 2020. Again, these are donations to the Human Services Agency, and we're always thankful for that. 5B is a recommendation to accept one-time appreciation gift donations estimated value of $1,670 from private citizens to the Washtau County Sheriff's Office. And always, as always, we are thankful to all the donations we get, and when they go to Human Services for Senior Services, for Child Care Services, for, when they go to the Sheriff's Department, we're just so thankful that our citizens are involved. And, Mr. Chair, that is in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do I have a second?
Good.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments signed in for the donation items?
I have no emails, Mr. Chair.
All right. Seeing no public comment, signed in for the donations. I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting telephonically. All right. Mr. Manager, that takes us to our consent agenda. Item six, we only have one consent item. This is pretty routine. This is to acknowledge the reports received by the clerk. Any of the Commissioners who want to take anything out of consent today?
No.
Seeing none, we'll take. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda. A second. Madam Clerk, do I have any public comment?
I have no emails, Mr. Chair.
All right. Seeing no public comment. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. All call for the vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting telephonically. All right. We are out of our consent agenda and on to our first public hearings. I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Manager, item seven, please.
Item seven is a public hearing in possible approval of an amendment, amended resolution in order of abandonment, recorded on October 2, 2018, as document number 4855471 of the Mildred Lane APN 040-581-2020. To clarify the recipients of abandonment as follows: APNs 040-581-00, Frank M. and Francis A. Lepore, 040-581-12, Fossage Family Trust, 040-581-13, Herbert and Susan Nichols Family Trust, 040-581-14, Herbert and Susan Nichols Family Trust, 040-581-19, the Ernott Family Trust, 040-582-02, Ryan M. Dolan Trust, 040-582-03, the Roland G. and Tina L. Scarselli, 040-582-04, Adam and Erica Kramer Family Trust, 040-582-09, Larry D. Klatch Family Trust, 040-582-10, Frida M. Holka, and 040-582-12, Thomas S. Dolan Trust, Community Services.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, is there anything that you need to do for this resolution? No?
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't see any public comment.
Do we have any public comment? All right. Seeing no public comment. Being that this is a public hearing, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from the board members? This is just cleanup. This has taken quite some time. We vote, this board voted on this back in, as you saw, on October 2, 2018. So this is cleanup to something we've already taken action on, but legally have to get done. So with that, looking for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Vice Chair Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting telephonically. All right. Mr. Manager, we're on to item eight.
Item eight is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk?
I have no emails, Mr. Chair, and I don't think we, we have nothing on Zoom.
All right. Seeing nobody signed in this afternoon this morning for public comment. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. We are on to item nine. Mr. Manager, final county managers and commissioners announcements. Do you have anything, sir?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, anything? Once, going once, twice. All right. One last thing for me. I just wanted to say once again to the Treybert and Stone family, Marcy Stone, who is Miss Steinheimer's county court clerk, and to the Treybert family. Nancy will be missed, so thank you for keep, you know, beat cancer. We got to keep beating cancer, so. All right, everybody. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.